You guys are right out of her she kisses.
She kisses.
Special ones.
I'm going to say that we don't owe that thing though. We're just gonna pay. Seven twenty seven.
That will connect.
So have everyone had an opportunity? To review the minutes from our meeting on meeting. Yes, and are there any changes to those minutes? And if not, could I have a motion to approve said minutes? Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of five twenty three. Do I have a second? On paper. Motion carries. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you, this is so strange. I still can't get used to like people being first.
Real people and distant.
So can I have a motion to move item seven eight, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four grades five, six plans update to? Now, I will make a motion to move twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four grades five, six plans update now. All in favor? Okay. Let's hear it, let's hear it, so last Thursday, I feel like days of London. The Swamp Scotts were committee men and they voted forty one. In principle. The terms that we agree. So what that means is they are ready to have an MOU drafted. So they have been in contact, I was speaking as their chair with legal, which is KP Law. And they are working on drafting a memorandum of information. And they would like to have that memorandum in time for their next school committee meeting, which is next Thursday, the twenty second. I have no idea where they stand in terms of that is legal, we both share the same law.
I was thinking why isn't it wrapped, isn't it?
Oh, interesting. Well, that, that, that is really interesting because. Both school districts utilize KP Law. And I received a determination letter from KP Law. Basically stating that there is a relationship between the two districts. That requires disclosure pursuant to the rules of professional conduct of the Massachusetts bar. Which mandate that we obtain the express permission of the appointing authority of each other's client entities before we can represent the others.
I mean, well, we've had lots of contracts with Swamp Scott, so is that always how it's drawn up?
Yes.
Yeah, by KP Law, that's representing both of us?
No.
Oh, so no.
Typically, on the five year contract for general. Their attorney draws it up. And then we run it by the town attorney. In this case, both districts had their attorneys earlier in the process. In the negotiations, so. The document that the chair signed basically said that. This school committee and specifically the chair realizes that the term represents both parties. That's all.
That's all. Now, however, I did receive an email today from Tim, our attorney, saying that basically I need a vote. From all of you regarding this determination letter, okay? Have it here if you guys would like to read this. Or we can table it for our next meeting, I just so wanted to.
Yeah, well, because the twenty second, you said of June, is that one? How realistic is it that they're gonna have those things together?
That's really the time of the month of April, the March.
Right.
So I recommend that we move forward with this. Determination. Because I don't want to be the party.
No, no, they actually specifically said that, I listened to the meeting. And that we didn't vote. And that delayed the process, which was kind of frustrating. We didn't vote because there was nothing to vote on. We were still voting.
Yeah, I'll give it to you first.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, no, during the meeting, we clarified that we didn't vote on the fifth grade change.
It was a bracket.
Of having fifth grade, that we're like, oh, the head of. We didn't vote on that.
I, I don't know, but we didn't vote on that. So, so basically, I was confused because I also watched the last week's meeting. Swamp Scott implied that we didn't, we were the delay, that we didn't vote on the terms, but there were no terms to vote upon.
Right, there was still the.
We were still negotiating.
Exactly, so there was nothing.
Yes.
I didn't think that there was anything that we were delayed upon.
I think that would be information.
That was the target.
That was my suggestion.
That's not true. Yeah.
So it says the only risk I would know would be an event that it matters really is the MOU breaks down between the parties. To the point where one party seeks legal or just for.
Yeah.
Always.
I mean, it's kind of.
It's kind of like if you're buying a house, the realtor.
It's also right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm told, but the actual lawyer is representing.
Those firm.
The firm's name is Cooper. Yeah, so they had, they deal with a gentleman by the name of Darren, and Tim is our contact. And I believe Jared is the one that sent this to us. But I don't know what's.
Tim said this.
Question. So, but historically, when we've had other contracts, have KP Law not represented both parties?
They have not.
Oh, who has new? Law, we have new counsel?
No.
They have new counsel.
No.
We haven't had a house.
Right.
That was a fun game. I knew it.
You have been signing an eight million dollar contract based on a higher recognition because their attorney draws it up. Exactly as we negotiated, and the only thing that's important in it was nothing has changed for. Fifteen years, three contracts, except the numbers. And we, I go over those numbers with a fine toothed gum. And I, I personally have never found it necessary to have an attorney read a five page document. That he or she never saw before and then ask us all the questions that have been answered. Three times already.
No, understood.
This is different. This is very different, this is unique. And if you remember that, a lot of moving parts, you know, when would the number of students be determined, would they be locked down for the year? So.
Yeah. So I think it's important that we.
Really?
Well, well, the MOU would be, that seems like a.
Yeah.
That's what you read, but yeah, the MOU, I think for both sides have a student.
Yeah. In my opinion, having dealt with this in different issues, not here. This letter is basically telling you that. Your representative who works for KP Law. And Swamp Scott's representative who works for KP Law. Will agree on the language before it gets sent to you. That's basically what it's saying, and that's very, that's atypical.
Yeah.
Typically, your attorney would work for somebody else. Or theirs. And Tim definitely is suggesting that you take a vote. So that either all of you sign this or you authorize the chair to sign it. Since the chair has already signed it.
Signed it last Friday, sorry guys.
I didn't.
But I didn't.
I think it would be fine if you took a vote and then the chair could sign it. Has already signed to put a date next to your signature and. They already had it, so they can move forward. It will take less time, but if you're not comfortable with that, all of you can sign it. Forty, you know, you know what the example would be if, if you look at my contract, my original contract. It was signed by every member of the school committee when I was hired, subsequently only the chair assigned.
But we voted to approve it.
Yeah, you authorize all the details, the chair signs it. That's sort of what is pretty typical, this again is unique. So, you know, whatever the members of the committee believe is the appropriate way to move forward, I think you should do that.
I think it's whatever you decide. Is room for all of you to sign?
Oh, ma'am, ma'am. Madam Chair, can I make one more comment, if I may? There's no jeopardy for the school committee or the taxpayers in the heart. Because you don't have a contract, you don't have to sign the contract. That's simple. No matter what they, these, this attorney brings back to this table. It has no impact on anybody unless you vote to approve it and sign it.
No.
So it's, there's no jeopardy. As compared to the five year contract for eight million dollars.
Does anybody have an opinion either way? Yeah.
So if you're comfortable with me signing, could I have a motion? I'll make the motion, the chair to sign. The disclosure agreement from KP Law dated June ninth, two thousand twenty three. Regarding the determination consent for students in Massachusetts schools of professional conduct. Rule one point seven, representation of the Swamp Scott School Committee and the Hart School Committee, memorandum of understanding to mention. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. I will re-sign in. Dates. And that is where we. In regards to. We. Incoming reasons. So do, is there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Are we ready for it? Shoot. Has there, are we sure about the plan in terms of the teachers for September, meaning? Is it definite that Mrs. Cobus will teach fifth, Mr. LaRue will teach fourth, do we have that? By moments.
As far as we know. I defer to you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
That's an administrative decision, and I would, I would ask that the school committee be patient with that determination. That is not a. That's not a discussion for this table.
Sure.
I can tell you. That I think the school committee will be pleased with the principal's decision, I don't even get involved. With the principal's decision.
I guess maybe along those lines. I know there was a lot of discussion because we were trying to figure out what would happen with the rise of fifth graders. And because it's a small class and there will be any combination. And it sounded like at the end of the meeting that we weren't going to be combining the fourth and fifth grade academically, but maybe for some socials.
Madam Chair, if I may again?
Oh, no, is that still on?
No, no, I think this is, this is different.
Oh, okay.
Because this, this is a, a request by the school committee to the superintendent to take care of something. Which is the worry that this may happen down the road and you don't want to be in this place again, doing the same thing over again. So, and I apologize, I don't remember, but I was given a name. By someone, Ms. Smith. I contacted that person who was out of town for a while, so it took a while for that person to get back to me. That person's contact information is now on the principal's desk to have a conversation. About having meetings with our staff about moving forward with a plan for. Hybrid multi-grade activities.
That's great. That's complex. No, no. By yours.
It was.
You know, now I should say, I think maybe this individual did mention that there was a conversation or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was, I had a wonderful conversation, this person's interested in.
It's not Jen Smith, it's her mom.
That is correct, it is not Jen Smith. Nancy Smith.
Yeah.
Who's a retired teacher who has worked in a building with multi-grade and is a proponent. She was wondering why my original plan didn't go forward. And I, I was very respectful. I just simply said it didn't and we just have to move forward.
But along the lines of what Gina's asking, so can we, so can we just get a, so since we put thoughtfulness into the upcoming plan for the classes that were either going to the middle school or weren't. Is the plan for the upcoming fourth grade and upcoming fifth grade? To combine for snack and morning meeting, but academically they'll have their own teachers, I guess. I'm trying to get a feel for.
Okay, so the feel is this, I mean, it's a great question, totally great question. Until. The individuals involved meet and have a discussion and discuss. What in their professional opinions is the best way to move forward, there's really no answer. So right now, the, the plan is to move forward with. What's socially, academically, and emotionally best for the fifth grade, which is the small group. Where, and does it negatively impact the fourth?
Great. That seems to me like a very general answer.
Of course it is.
Yeah.
They have a set.
Yeah. Right, so my question is, I realize that we know, we don't know, of course, the final plan. But as it looks right now, is that how we see it happening?
Which way?
With the fourth and fifth having snack, morning meeting, similar to what the fifth and sixth graders were doing this year. They're combining for socialization because that fifth grade class is small, but academically they have their own teachers.
My initial answer to that is no. Because if that were the plan, that we would need those discussions about. Now, you know, now that I hear the question, I get it. I apologize, I wasn't seeing it.
I'm, I'm trying to put as much thoughtfulness into this plan as we did into the other plan.
Right.
Because this was a very abrupt decision, is how I feel. And I want to make sure that these things are thought, thought right about, so I don't, I understand that we can't finalize a plan yet. But it would be nice to know, like, is that what you see it as?
I don't see the socialization of playground, snack, reading group, the only way they would be grouped.
Okay.
However, I do need to, in all honesty, to say, this group that I'm not a part of meets and says, that's what they recommend. I'm not, certainly, I, I'm over.
Okay.
But I do believe, after speaking with this person. That she believes that there are very good, wholesome, constructive. Ways and activities that could combine groups to both of their, to a positive outcome for both. So let me just tell you one of the things that is in my head, project, project-based learning. In a project-based learning group, you could do either a mixed age group team doing a project. That seems like one of the things that would not be dramatically changing the way either group learns. Now, which subject that is in, I would leave it to the professionals to determine which, which one it fits with. You know, they could, if you remember my, my example way back, they could do a project based on warfare. And because the, the dates of the social studies in the two grades are different. One would be doing warfare in, in one time.
Yeah.
Stand, and the other grade would be doing warfare in the other, in another. The good thing about project-based is when projects are reported upon. Everybody learns.
Right.
Everything. Not in the same depth, of course.
Right. And I think too, you know, when we had talked about the. Success of the school and the students and the staff. That it's, that we have to, if this is the path that the administration decides to go, that it's not. To take, get out of the box of grade-based learning. And project-based learning or hybrid learning that. It's not, it's, it's a model that's successful for no matter how many students you have in one grade.
Right.
Because we really want everybody to try and not. Come to a situation again where we're like, okay, we don't know what to do here, but we have a longstanding plan. In action, hopefully. For everybody's success.
Yeah, with, with the, Madam Chair, through you, with the advanced recognition. That when and if that happens, there's still more planning that needs to be done for the specifics involved. For example, if it's first grade and second grade, it's very different than if it's fifth and sixth, very different. And so there's going to be planning involved. Yeah, I think in terms of the concept of it. If you took. Let's take math. Pretty concrete. We do that on an individual basis using the technology, so. But if you took every student in this school and you put them on a bar graph. From the student who has the lowest computational and mathematical skills to the highest. And you put them on a bar graph, they wouldn't fall by grade.
Right.
There would be, there would be overlaps, there may be somebody way down here. That would be, you know, in second grade, that may be up here with fifth graders. And that's what multi-grade learning strengthens. There are some weaknesses, obviously, you know, nothing is good for everyone. But, you know, if you, that's how I think of it. You know, there are. There are children who come to school, learn knowing everything that we teach them in kindergarten. And the question is. By keeping them in kindergarten rather than allowing them to go to first grade, we. Do we do them good, harm, or is it neutral? And I think long term. We're going to be answering it, I think we're going to be answering that question, and this is the perfect school to do it, yeah, because of the numbers. So, you know. Turn the, turn the lemons to real sweet lemonade.
Yes, hopefully.
Right?
Yeah.
But it's really, and I apologize for not really hearing.
No, that's okay, I just think.
Yeah.
It's really on my mind that, that we're careful about the combinations, that it's also best for the upcoming fourth grade, not just the upcoming fifth grade.
Right.
That is my.
Madam Chair, if I may, I hope I said that.
Yeah, no, I get it. Thank you.
Did I say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, what's, what's good for the fifth grade can't be in any way anything but good for the fourth grade.
Yes. Or, or, or any other grade, any other.
Which, or any other grade, or we just need it the way it is.
I'm only saying it in that way because that wasn't the way, things changed last meeting, like, yeah, in terms of what we decided, and so that's, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Mostly the conversation.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for the questions. They were very clar, they were clarifying.
Hey, then I will open it up to. Community correspondence. If anyone has anything that they would like to say, they can just say your name and address. And just a reminder that the correspondence is just for comment, there's no discussion from the committee. It's just a comment to the committee.
Can you see that well, I can hear that well, but is anything happening?
Yeah.
No, nothing. I don't know whether we.
Any of them online since last meeting.
No, we have Millie's Priya and we have Nancy Kajia online.
Madam Chair, one thing that may be helpful to get into the record tonight, I know it's there, but you know, every time we move forward, I always remember that I live this day to day and other people who are just dropping in may not have that constant re, you know, reminder of that the agreement that you talked about previously. And um the MOU would be for one year, one year only. And that there will be no sixth grade, if that MOU is eventually signed. There would be no sixth grade at the Johnson School next year. And if you remember, I said that way back, you know, there's no comeback, there's not, I don't like it in Swanscott, so can we come back and have sixth grade?
Right.
There's no six, just like for our seventh graders.
Right, right.
There was no seventh grade. Yeah, if there's seventh grade to come back to, there wouldn't be a sixth grade to come back to, but this agreement will be for that for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four only.
Well, he also agrees that we would have the option to consider the same agreement for the incoming fifth graders who would be six years for the following year.
So we don't have
Not, not that we're doing it, it's for evaluating. School is going to be like next year.
And because we don't have the MOU, we don't know what that option may look like in the legal terms. Does Nahan have, does the Nahan School Committee have the option of sending? If then, at what cost? Is it by mutual agreement like this year's was, right? Both school committees. So we don't know that yet.
I thought they did vote on it.
They did, they did.
They voted in principle.
In principle, in principle.
It would be this kind of cost, same cost, same terms.
But in principle.
I'm from New Jersey.
And the reason what was four to one and not unanimous vote is because because they wanted to see it like, therefore she agreed to vote. That's why it's.
Yeah. And as I said, until both parties actually sign the the uh memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement, which I'm going to call or that the attorneys may decide it's going to be amended amendment to the current contract. I, we don't know.
Yeah.
But until until um the the moment that the second party's signature goes on that agreement. Nothing's changed. However, we're moving forward, because we have to.
Right.
Yeah, and I I'm sure
Yeah.
that will, we're looking.
So am I, but.
I don't think they'll come back to us to like slam this in some way.
I would hope not, that you know, the negotiations was extremely positive.
Tom Tria, Tin High Street, Massachusetts. Um, thank you so much for your diligence on this important matter. Uh, I don't envy the position you're in uh for many reasons. Um, I guess my only comment, since I can't ask questions for discussion, would be I've heard a lot of different viewpoints around town, just around like what they think is going to happen. And in sitting in this meeting and listening, I think it'll be extremely helpful that once we do have a signed memorandum of understanding that we send out very clear communication on what it is and what it is not. Because I think sometimes if you only say what it is, people fill that void with their own information. Uh, and it happens very quick in a small town. Um, and a lot of it to me like didn't make sense. That's why I'm here today. Because I was like, all right, I'm a logical person. I just want to see what these other logical people have to say about this. So that's my own.
Thank you. Great.
That's amazing, very thoughtful. I guess I just want to make a statement about it. Is there going to be a way that we know that this isn't going to just keep continuing down the road? Is there is there anything that stops it from after that next, you know, potentially after that one year with the other short number of students? Where is there, where is there a line that doesn't continue to keep happening? Like, is there a threshold of six students, seven, or four? And I'd like to keep my kids here in town as long as possible. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I wouldn't understand without asking your question.
Yeah, I think you could talk about first thoughts.
Once a meeting first.
Once a meeting first.
And and we invite you to stay for that. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, we will close. In terms of the the number, I don't know what the answer to that question. I think this year we were faced with uh combining classes and, you know, that wasn't well received. And I think if we were to move forward with a long-term plan, we would have have input from the community and just, you know, personal input from the community and but not only input from the community, but really looking at the 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 data and but also the budget. And I know people don't like to hear that um it's money or financially driven. Most of what we've looked at has been financially driven. And so to sit here and say that it's not, I feel is not really um because if we look at things generally whatever decisions people make in school are financially based and they do what they do with the money that they have. And so if we were to ever look at that and we have to look at, you know, what are our costs for people to keep things open here and 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 also if we we have this piece already, also the academics and and really, like, is there data to support, you know, sending sixth grader over to middle school? Was better than socially or is it better than here? Like, is there data to support, you know, how they are academically here, you know, versus the academics and stuff like that? So I think that while, you know, people can have perspective on what they feel should happen. It really should be data-driven. That is my perspective, yeah. I think, I think that the, I would say the highest point of the decision this year that made it really difficult to keep them here and combine them is because we didn't have a plan in place. Either there wasn't um a structure in place or wasn't the I'm not saying that you wouldn't have put a plan in place. There hadn't been a plan that's longstanding on how to train the staff and how to do this well. And there was a lot of concern that in the few months that we've had, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be done well enough. And that the better option. So I don't think so much a number. I think it was more the situation of the number plus not being able to, you know, be confident on what that would look like and that it would be well enough supportive students. And so that's what we really and Mr. Prantasi was speaking about, that we're really putting together a long-term plan about not only the older classes, which sometimes will trickle off in numbers because of you know, other academic opportunities outside of Nahan, but also um, you know, maybe there's a small first or second grade class and how can we optimize their learning opportunity? Not just to, I mean, obviously you would stay here, but just make it even more robust. And, you know, along those lines of, you know, what the future looks like, that's a much, like Michelle said, that's a much bigger conversation. That's going to be town-wide. Um, and data-driven and with a consultant available to help us make those decisions. So, so that, you know, we would have both a long-term plan in place to support the students that are staying here. But also I think that this generated a bigger conversation of like, is this the better plan? The other thing I wanted to mention after listening to the meeting is that there was a lot of conversation about, well, the the middle school was together in Swanscott in fifth grade. But we have to remember now that the elementary school is going to be against the get-go. So like, what are we going to just say?
Idea, like, I feel like the, a lot of the push was, will they all get together in the fifth grade? Like, they're going to be all together from kindergarten. So so I don't, I don't know that, you know, that that changes the perspective significantly.
And you, and you also, you know, where they have this larger elementary school that students in fifth grade, who knows what their long-term plan is going to be.
Exactly.
And and then you also, again, it's like, you have the perspective of the parents who are over there now who say, I wish my child wasn't, I wish my fifth grader was I wish my sixth grader wasn't in middle school and they kept their, you know, innocence. You know, again, it's all opinion and it's in what your personal perspective is, and that's not what we should, you know, any of us. I I don't want to, I do not want to base it off of that, you know, it it had to be really concrete for me to make a change. That's really good. I'm also looking at this from a business perspective, and I know that's kind of crazy to look at it with school, but there is a lot of competition for our kids, right? And parents have options. I think we need to look at this from, uh, you know, what sense in Johnson's school. What is competitive? What can we take advantage of here? And there's so many natural resources that we delve into, but I think we can tap into it for that we be sensitive to it, so that parents want to keep their kids here, understanding that there is a budget. You know, and we are constrained to some extent, but there's a lot that we can do to make this school stand out and draw parents to keep their kids here. I think that is the issue honestly that happened with our incoming grade five and six is that those class sizes were not originally that big. The parents made it seem like their kids are for many different reasons. And I really wanted to address those issues.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have so much to say, and I'm not excited. First of all, one of the most important things in terms of the financial argument and discussion is that the people in our community understand that the data shows that we are not spending at the Johnson School any more money than Swanscott spends per pupil. It's within a few hundred dollars. As a matter of fact, we're a little lower right now. That's when every year changes. So you know, we're not spending twenty-five thousand dollars a child and there's, and they're as compared to spending seventeen. That's not the reality. The reality is local tax money, very similar. And I think that's important. Number two is I don't think there is an appetite that I have heard to not have a school in the heart. Any school. Uh, there may be some people out there, but clearly they're not the ones communicating with me. I think a lot of people like the community school. Um, and I believe that's not just school people. I believe that's municipal officials. Thirdly, we have a unique set of circumstances with this class and the next. They are the ones that went through a very formative period of time in COVID. Where we couldn't have our after-school activities. And you know, it was kind of like a slide. Once the numbers started going and then um people understood that there were options, as the chair said. We also had families that were also, that were already connected to other schools serendipitously had children in those grades. And I think lastly, we have already begun, the activities that the chair has mentioned are so important. Our band was terrific the last three times they played.
I love Mr. B. He has to stay.
He, absolutely has.
And also, I mean, when I tell you when we had our sixth grade gathering, one of them for the money, um, how many people, I told him at the end, just since he was able to um join us that evening. Everybody was so grateful for Mr. Ball and all of his effort and the kids and like so many other things that I heard about him and his um inclusion of all the kids, even those kids who don't want to practice D B and he had them going. But um, there's just so much joy and things like that. And he has done a wonderful job. They're like
Our art program this year.
What I could do is give him lots of positive feedback that I received from everybody. And that's what everybody can do because, you know, not that that's you know, always nice to have money, but I think appreciation is, well, you know, deserve. I mean, and again, all of our teachers, I think, are wonderful, but everybody was just so grateful for that.
Likewise, our art program exploded this year under the current leadership. Uh, if you remember pre-COVID, we were winning awards.
Yeah.
Well, we got one again, first time in uh two, three, well, depending on how you look at it. Two, two years were missed. Um, our physical education program, uh, students are loving their their physical education and health program. Uh, our after-school four-week segments, we had almost forty students.
Good enrollment in the original program.
Um, and again, uh, we can, we're going to not only continue all that, but we're going to expand on it. Uh, we were just ready to start the marine school concept when COVID hit. We were talking about it that winter. In the spring, we were going to um work with Northeastern University to get more marine uh science involved. Well, we're working on that again. So there's lots of really good things happening here. And we're in the seventy-nine percent spot academically on standardized tests. Um considerably higher than um the alternative. Any of the alternatives. Um, one of the most frequent things I've heard about alternative choices is a longer school then. I've heard several parents.
Yeah, really low costs.
And yet, when I talk to parents, our parents, they said, no. If it's voluntary, that's one thing, but if you're going to make my kid go another hour, that's a different, that's a different issue. Um, so you know, we will address that too.
Um, and forgive me if this is the wrong place to talk about this. Um, but one of the things that I have brought up previously um was for the recreation department. Um, and I'm just not sure how to go about doing it, but you know I run soccer and I'm giving that up this year. Um, but I think that there's such an opportunity for a recreation department in town to work, not only with the school-aged kids, but again, to bring in that community feel for people who still miss, like, want to be helping kids and coaching kids and like bringing recreation to the school for after-school. And even, I mean, I've talked more about like town football and basketball, but like, there's just so much opportunity I see for there to be programs that are run by the town in combination with the school. Um, to further those things. And, you know, the people who volunteer are the same people who are volunteering for all of the things. And honestly, like, it's just, we can't, we can't do everything, you know, so it would be you know, an opportunity, I think, to to work together for all of the community members, old and young, in the middle. Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
Um, it sounds like you're saying contact the rec department to see if they'd like to use school grounds after school for intramural sports. Is that the, I need a concrete kind of image of what you're thinking here.
I mentioned that there is a person who was hired by the town to run recreation, like, somebody who a paid person who throughout it is to do.
We had that person, right.
Right, so that um, you know, people aren't just scrambling trying to keep programs running. Um, and that person could come in to.
And use the gym for a basketball.
For the hoops program.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, let's go back to the fourth.
Some stills, some stills workshop, you know.
Let's play, well, let's go run around the building, have a try. I mean, to me, it's very.
Yeah.
Because other towns do them, like, and they get paid off at school. Well, when you think about, like, I think of summer camp and I'm like, you know, you go.
You could sign up for half, forty five minutes.
Swanscott Rec for this cooking class or, right, Marvel type.
That's a great idea. I mean, it's great, we talk about, we can, can access all the time.
I mean, you know, when I don't know, I'm. Crazy, I don't know how to put it faster, but it's just a good question.
I'd be happy to answer that.
It's a great concept and a good conversation.
Cause I think you have so many community people that are involved in things already.
Yeah.
But.
And as long as I don't have to run it, I can show up.
I hear you, I, yeah. You can only, all of us, thank you. I can only do so much.
Yeah. But you have people who, you know, we have parents who will support it, I think is what you're saying.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
And and the kids would appreciate it, so. I'd be glad to take a step on.
And the programs in town wouldn't have to go away, but some step up was just the best thing to me ever.
I, I have to tell you a story that fits in so beautifully with what Michelle was talking about. Every year, the insurance company sends me a, uh, form to file. For all of the recreational, physical education, use of outdoor spaces in the town. So they know how many people are involved, you know, how many kids, what ages. And every year I fill in the phys ed piece and I bring it up to town hall and there's no way to get.
Right. That, yeah.
Because Little League is here and soccer is here.
Basketball is no more, there's no.
That's right, so I think, uh, I'll, we'll have a conversation with, uh, the individuals at the town hall. And we're not talking about a lot of money.
Can I have, so I can, which was at town hall as well, because Mark Covington actually approached me, he wants to do a program on this school. So we'll talk about that. So that was so, that's what I said, maybe not just sports, but like cooking or, you know, a slime, like anything that will involve kids of all types.
This week, I have a cooking class.
Yeah.
A PTO program. The PTO day, yeah.
It was amazing. I remember, the smells were wonderful. It's kind of like extra.
Yeah, and and, yeah, teachers would buy the ingredients and then do the activities.
Activities, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, like our after school program this year was full of all types of activity, activities, some physical and most not.
Cooking would be fun, especially for the other race. At the time, I didn't even do something.
We used some.
It's our long trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't wanna spend any of that, but I'm happy to be involved, right?
Exactly, like, I don't wanna run it, but I totally need some time, yes, not all of them, right, right, we're here.
We will look into it.
Thank you, thank you.
Have the preliminary discussions this spring and I'm sure over the summer and hopefully we'll have something ready to do in the fall.
Hopefully that's.
It's exciting. And we have to keep up our notch with Northeastern, so we can know that, yeah.
See, I love it, teamwork, brainstorming, ideas, school can be absolutely amazing. Not that it is, it is, even more, but that is always more, it's always more, it can always improve, that we're always trying to do. I wanna get that seven million up to like, any, overachiever, that's one rule, but we can do it.
Oh, yeah.
Shall we move on? Alright, in terms of the examination and authorization for a human of bills, I have motion, oh. I'll make a motion, um.
And.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, I'm jumping.
Yeah, I did, I checked the number and the number you're gonna hear is the actual number. I was able to, uh, text.
Okay.
And it needs to be paid, so the real number is.
Seventy two thousand five hundred thirty five dollars and thirty five cents. Yes. Seventy two thousand five hundred thirty five dollars and thirty two thousand. Twelve thousand.
That's the one missing.
Okay. The bill is for, um, national, national grade, yeah. Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. 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 Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
I, I.
Moving on to the super, this report, we should be getting to the principal's report, so I don't know if you wanna.
Well, I will think from here then, um, so we had a wonderful portfolio on Swoops night. I wanna say a big thank you to the PTO that did a fabulous job supporting it and putting out. Fancy toppings for hot dogs and nice choices for desserts. I, um, wonderful evening. Uh, we, it was a great celebration, but music arts and academics, so, yeah. I really wanna say a big thank you for the teachers to, you know, get the kids ready for it. And, uh, everyone kind of put the extra, you know, push in there and I thought it came up great. Uh, that followed by music concert, and well done again to the students and to Mr. Boak. Uh, we had a wonderful time. We had, uh, Mr. Lockwood set up the green screens, the kids would see it from the library while they were waiting to be called up. So they all got to see the whole concert. We had Google Meet set up. And, um, so they can see their, you know, classmates and friends, uh, but still provide that magic of the stage. So, uh, Mr. Bullock's really been adding a lot of theatrics and professionalism, I think, to the, the program and I appreciate that. We just had our middle school transition to our fifth, for our, uh, fifth graders, and Mr. Kalashman came back. Uh, today, and tonight is the parents' open house over at the Swanscott Middle School. Thanks to the middle school for really hosting us again, Mr. Kalashman for his time, he made a trip over, really appreciate that, the students enjoyed meeting him. I think they felt comfortable, uh, talking to him, that was, that was really helpful for that. Now, teachers typically have about, you know, forty minutes a day for preparation and meeting time, and so when these events happen so quickly. It's hard to really, um, think about what's gonna be next. We really just have about, you know, a, 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 a short while in each day. To connect and meet about something, and so we wanna make sure that we're, we think about the kids first. And then, you know, going forward, we'll be thinking about what's next, you're gonna be like I did here in the hallway today. Teachers chatting about how to get different grade levels together, so those conversations that I can say are already in the way. Uh, we had a wonderful field day, a fantastic turnout from the parents, uh, Ms. Martino's first. She did a great job putting it together with the support again of all the staff and students, excellent participation and cooperation. Uh, another thing I want to mention is just that we have entered the year evaluation going on right now. Uh, twelve teachers, my paraprofessional's been evaluated recently. Uh, I'm really pleased with our staff and they've just, you've had a great year, uh, lots of changes, but also, um, a very successful idea. And finally, I wanna say, uh, thanks to Ellen Antrim and the Nahat Gardening Club. They were a gardening grant for us and they got a hundred fifty dollars in tours. And, um, and the kids have been using those and much appreciated it. So that's, uh, teaching and learning, and then under community enrichment, uh, we had our Memorial Day parade, eight twenty nine. The band again, um, you know, won the day, I thought, uh, with a nice, uh, recitation of different songs. And then, of course, we had Aoni by Miller, rec- recite the Genny's Bird flawlessly and with passion. I, I thought it was all great.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, whatever, let's see. And then, uh, we had the sixth grade dinner over at the Coast Guard Station, lovely event. Um, thanks for having us out there and, um. You know, I'll be sad to see them go, but everybody grows up and changes, so have to embrace it.
Keep telling us that.
I know. Yeah, I know, we all, we all will, it's, um. You know, it, it's the neat thing about being in this type of job is that you, you work with people and people who are going through big, big changes. And you see the growth, you can celebrate it with them. Um, I met these kids in kindergarten. Um, so it's special for me and to Tony as well.
Is it the first class that you've had all the year, or?
Yeah, 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 and I have memories from them, eh, you know, doing all the little things and, you know, me getting here, me being new.
Yeah.
And I've been here.
Yeah, both of us.
Yeah.
Four of us, fans.
Yeah, yeah, especially.
So why this class is so special and having us all.
At all, I mean, yeah, wow.
So, yeah, it was, it was, it's been, uh, a nice, uh, series of events that we've had. Uh, down the bottom there, I have the upcoming events. Of course, we have, uh, sixth grade moving on. The sixth grader's gonna move, uh, meet tomorrow at town hall practice and then, uh, do their ceremony.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on the following day, we'll have fifth grade moving on as part of our flag ceremony, last day of school. Uh, they'll receive certificates, uh, students have been invited to, uh, participate and share poetry and quotes. And, uh, Mr. Parentalzy and I will, um, congratulate them for their accomplishment, as will the, the whole school. And the whole school will be there. Uh, June nineteenth is a holiday, and then I have some, um, summer dates on there, garden tour. We're on the Nahat Garden Tour on, uh, Saturday, July ninth, July eighth, rather, and then our pro- summer programming begins, uh, July tenth. And Superintendent will give you some more details about that.
Um, I have another question, so.
Sure.
When do the students, you know how they have their, um, I, last IREDDI assessment?
Yes.
Uh, results before the end of the school year?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
And MCAS, we don't get until fall, is that correct?
That's right, it'll, it's always moving up, I'm happy to say that we've gotten preliminary, but yeah, they'll be early fall.
Okay, thank you.
But IREDDI will be coming.
Home of the students.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Very exciting stuff. It's, it's been, it's been a really busy week, so it's much. I can ask one question, I'm sorry. Um, do the paraprofessionals get the same professional development that everybody else? Is it one topic for the, all of the staff? When you do par- when you do, uh, professional development, yeah? Do the, the paraprofessionals do?
Madam Chair, if I may, and, uh. Please correct me and add any details, um. The, let's do. Let's, let's do the beginning of this year versus the end of this year. At the beginning of this year, uh, the principal and I would meet with the special education director and say. What do we need, you know, what, and, and typically I get a newsletter from the commissioner every week. And there's always something about, you know, professional development, emotional learning, so- social health, um. Technology and its dangers, technology and its great uses, et cetera, et cetera. So we would, uh, meet and determine, um, what our staff really needed. And if appropriate for paraprofessionals, they would be invited. But it's not part of their contract. The paraprofessionals participated, uh, typically participate whenever we invite.
Well, that's great.
Huh?
That's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, it is actually, it is extra hours and pay. Right now, because of, of Mr. Andrews' very quick. Movement towards what we heard and read in the survey, we now have a committee of faculty. Uh, and other staff members, I think it might be one or two other staff members, are they all teachers?
All T P, yeah, right, yeah, all.
All teachers, exactly.
Anyone welcome to join.
Right, who meet and are talking right now about what they think we need for next year. And what I would do as superintendent, when I hear about something, I would tell either the principal or them. Today, for example, I told them directly. Uh, at a faculty meeting, I said, you know, um, Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth is a really good source and. Uh, since COVID, we haven't used them as much as we used to. So you may wanna look into their, um, professional development library and they seem interested. So, um, so now there's more of a co- collaborative cooperative. But again, depending upon the subject, we would invite the paraprofessionals, so, um. And then on a professional development day, there would be a variety act of activities. Uh, some per all, and then some would break out. Uh, depending on the grade level or their interest or the need. You know, the other thing the principal does is he looks at the MCAS scores and other data about where we're doing what strongly and where we're not. And that guides our professional development. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll turn it over.
Thank you.
Sure, so, uh, the paraprofessionals attend the full day workshops and we work hard to make sure that there's always topics, keynote speakers. That will address, you know, topics that anybody would wanna attend to. But then there are also topics that only certain groups would be interested in. We try to schedule those for our. One or one hour after school or an hour and a half early weeks. So the teacher, the more educator focused, like data, data dives. That's gonna be on a day that's an hour and a half where paraprofessionals are not obligated to come, they're welcome to come at any discretion. Other times we'll ask them to come, we're going to do something about behavior management in the classroom, all school. Please come on this date in May and you'll be compensated.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then, then the expectation is you will come because we've told you well in advance and we're compensating.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we can move on to the facility example.
Uh. I have the classic. Yin and yang story. The good. We have had a tremendous improvement in our facility over the last twelve months. It involves. A total new, uh, heating, gas driven, the heating system on the roof of, of the cafeteria. New phones that include, um, a computer, new bells and a new public addresses. Uh, the new cafeteria fans that we put in last summer. A new boiler pump that went in in the last five weeks. We are going, uh, to refurbish our glycol. If you remember, the system had water remembrance, but it was freezing all the time. Now it doesn't use it all. Well, we did a test and it's down to, uh, the effective glycol is down to about minus. One degree Fahrenheit, and we're gonna put more in, so it goes down to about twenty degrees Fahrenheit, just in case. The negative about that is we spent a tremendous amount of money on the facility in the last twelve months. And you will see that next week when I put all the transfers before you. You will see a lot of money moving around. It's, uh, atypical.
But need.
But needed, absolutely needed, um. The building was renovated in two thousand seven, two thousand five, two thousand six, total, uh, finished in two thousand seven. I don't think much was done for ten years. And we, we, we've caught up, right? Uh, the only thing I know is we still have the dead tree out back and that's probably waiting for the summer, uh, work. Um, by the way, that tree is going to be cut at ten feet high and it's called a snag.
Snag.
A snag.
Nag.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
If you look. Yeah, there's one back, there's one out back.
Four, and, and they have holes big enough almost for screech owls now, thanks to the woodpeckers that'll be going after the holes. So it's, it's working, it's neat, yeah.
So the facilities is, is in good shape. Uh, questions?
No.
Okay, uh, to say nothing.
That's, that's expensive.
To say nothing for me splurging on new chairs.
I got it. Chairs are nice.
They're really great.
Oh, I agree.
Uh, just for the record, the chairs were free.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they are nice.
They are, yeah.
Okay, so the Bay State rebate increase, there's a letter, uh, in your package six C. Uh, as of April, the Bay State textiles, which are the owners of the two re- uh, recycling bins, uh, in the driveway. They are increasing what they pay us, uh, to one hundred and twenty dollars per time. Uh, last year, I, I showed you the end of the year, I put this in the neighborhood of six hundred fifty dollars for the student activity account. So that was a good addition, um. A little bit of pushback when I recommended it, but it's long in the past. Uh, it's always better to recycle things and it's further than the way I obviously. Uh, the budget update, the two thousand twenty three budget update, well, part of my facilities report covered this. Uh, the budget update, the two thousand twenty-three budget update, well, part of my facilities report covered this. The transfers will be uh, next week and on July eleventh meeting, and that should finish it. It looks like we are going to dip into some of our reserves. Uh, but that's what they're for. And uh, we are not, right now, it does not look like I have to go to the finance committee for any reserve fund or for, to the town administration for any reserve funds, which is good considering what we purchased this year. The May twenty-sixth professional development report, just as an example of what, um, Mr. Andrews was talking about. Notice that, um, the day is divided in segments and this is exactly what he was mentioning to you. Okay? Just so you know what we do on those days, it's really important. Madam Chair, do you want me to go right into old business?
Please, yes.
Okay, old business, we've covered A. Summer programs, this is gonna take a while, so bear with me. We have uh, on July tenth through August third, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of those four weeks, the uh, summer enrichment program, which is a general education program open to any parent who wishes to send their children free. Uh, that's eight thirty to eleven thirty. We have blended the Island Roots summer camp program so that a child of, of working parents can be here in the morning and then go to the Island Roots so that pick up is that various times. And that's the first time we're doing that, so we we shall see how it works, you know, we're very optimistic. Uh, at the same time, there will be a special education extended year program. That is for a group of students who if they do not have uh, special education in the summertime, the uh, experts who are present during their I D P meeting believe there will be regression. So in order to prevent the regression, we offer a program. Uh, that and that's the same time. So there can be crossover. The Acceleration Academy, which you have just seen as a parent.
Yeah.
Uh, that is, um, August twenty-first to August twenty-fifth, that's eight thirty to twelve thirty. And the reason it goes to twelve thirty is because in order to qualify for the grant funding, it has to be a twenty-hour week of, of activity. Um, we already have over thirty parents who, who have
expressed interest.
That's cool.
Yeah.
And that just went out on Thursday or Friday.
That's, that's great.
With thank yous, thanks for the program, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we are waiting for approval. That's, I'm too excited.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh, the, the application period closed on the ninth of June and I have no idea when I'm gonna get the response from the commissioner's office. Last week, uh, last year, it was in July, early July. So there'll be plenty of time for parents to plan. Um, this year, they changed the format a little bit. During that week, there will be three different groups. There will be an early literacy academy. Okay, one, two. Focused for the entire time on literacy. Then there will be two, three, four, five, six academies. One for E L A and one for math. And um, once we know we're getting it, there will be a planning meeting and we'll figure out how to communicate with the parents. How that's gonna work, are we gonna split it? Are we gonna have the parents, do you have any idea how we're gonna handle that yet?
Yeah, so, excuse me, um, I do. I was thinking that students could go from, you have E L A in the mo- go to the E L A academy in the morning and then have, in the second part of the morning, have the math academy if they wanted to do both. You know, if we sought, if we thought they would do both. Um, and we typically have, you know, more students in the K one, two. We have a lot of preschool students who are, it's, it's, you're eligible in preschool, this program, if you're going into K.
Rising K.
Rising K. So it's for Rising K, that would be the early literacy group, and they're just focusing on early literacy. And then the slightly older students could focus on math or literacy. I think with our numbers and our age range in that group, we'll probably do E L A and math for all the students. Rather than do a math group that is, has a wide range of grades.
Yeah.
So, they, they would probably have an opportunity, in, if you have three hours, or four hours, that's right, four hours in a day. You might as well do both, M, math and E L A.
Yeah, four hours of one subject is a long time.
No. Yeah. And, and it'll be broken down into twenty-minute, thirty-minute activities within that too, we know how to, you know.
Are you?
This is good.
No, I'm more than forcefully.
No, 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 it's gonna be exciting and engaging, hands-on, you know.
When, when you think of a four-hour program, eight thirty to twelve thirty, you think of a six and a half hour school day, lunch, spectacles.
Yeah, it's, maybe, almost like a small school.
Yeah.
Almost a full week of school.
Contact time would be very good, it would be be a better ratio than we could get in terms of time teaching, learning versus time going between learning.
That's great.
So our, um, I know, I knew you would be interested in this, so uh, let me tell you. Our special education staff for the summer is going to be Chi An Wuchi, who has been our occupational therapist, who will be moving on.
It's gonna stay out of the summer.
But she didn't move on the spring side. She is moving on because she's now a certified occupational therapist looking for a full-time job and you don't have. Yeah. Linda Markey, who will be our special, uh, excuse me, our speech and language therapist. Um, she worked with us last summer and she is a highly qualified and experienced speech and language person. And Janice Wallwood will be our special education teacher. She is our full-time special education teacher. The summer enrichment program will have three teachers and three paraprofessionals. Uh, Jessica Martino, Lou Wog and Katie Pastor will be our teachers. Uh, Ed Goodrich, Sarah Listenberg and Maureen Locke. Uh, I think five of those six are known to you. Uh, Maureen Locke is a famous Nahat family. Uh, Mr. Locke is the uh, treasurer of the town. So she, she has a long history with Nahat and we're thrilled to get her. Uh, we will have a nurse here full-time during both of those programs. Um, we're still hiring, uh, finding a, a nurse is real tough. So if you know of anybody who's looking for part-time summer work, let me know. Uh, we do have a nurse hired for two of the four days of the programs. The individual cannot work four days uh, because of prior commitment. And then the kind of exciting part is Ms. Sodaro will be here as a reading specialist this summer.
Thanks.
Ms. Sodaro is one of our classroom teachers in our primary grades. But she's also a licensed certified reading teacher. So, uh, she'll be, um, working with students, both special education and general education students who need some support in, um, reading, decoding, et cetera. This is a busy summer for her, she's getting married, so she's not available all the time. But we make sure we snuck her in when she's available.
That's great.
So that's the summer, a busy summer.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, um, any of your activities we've covered? In depth. And then the uh, twenty-three, twenty-four pre-K, K preliminary numbers. Uh, right now, it looks like we have twenty-four locked-in kindergarten students. Interesting number. Large enough to devote two classrooms, which is what's on the board.
Okay.
Small enough to combine, uh, but I chose not to do it that way. My theory was, I said this to you before, solid foundation, small numbers. You know, very low, uh, adult, you know, one to six adult child ratio. So a great foundation will pay dividends.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure, perhaps, we should.
Okay? Uh, and that number, they grow, as we'll see. And our preschool numbers, we have thirty students registered.
Wow.
Wow.
Three will turn the appropriate age, um, in October, which is three years old. So we will end up at thirty-three by the middle of October.
Okay.
Right now, with the thirty, the numbers are, and if you remember, in preschool, the students can sign up for five or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, three, or Tuesday, Thursday, two. We try to keep it patterned like that because, uh, I'll, I'll explain it in a second, you'll, you'll see it. So we have twenty-one students or twenty-five students a day. Twenty-five on Tuesday, Thursday, twenty-one on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. On lunch bunch, which is the afternoon part of the preschool, we don't restrict the days a parent can sign up. It's five, any four, any three, any two or any one day. The problem then is on a particular day, there are going to be regroupings. But because it's not academic, we feel it's a service to the parents so they can work. And it's, it's okay to do it that way as compared to in the morning, which is academic kindergarten.
Right.
So, um, so we have either, either, uh, eleven, thirteen or fourteen students signed up for lunch bunch. And a total of nineteen families so far. Again, an interesting number, one in which, um, we believe that, uh, we need two people.
Yeah.
But that age group is one person alone.
But that's, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is so tough.
Yeah.
So even, yeah, we're hoping that, again, that grows maybe a little. Yeah, but, um, yeah. It's almost impossible to do kids that age.
Right.
Right, so can I ask you a question? So for the preschool, the thirty registered, is that better? Is that? I'm trying to figure out how to answer this question.
So they're different ages?
Yes, so there's two, like, age groups for preschool, right?
That's very great.
Okay, that's a great, you are asking great questions today.
Thank you.
Historically, that's the way it was done. The staff and the principal met several times to have a discussion about that in the future. And they have determined that very much like I said with the grade levels, that there's a continuum, that they will divide the children in a way that's not age-specific. Uh, one group may be larger because they can deal larger for the bigger group. One group may be smaller and have students who need more needs. Some of those students may be three or four. And
Great.
And that was a, a collaborative decision, and, and I support it, obviously. They're the professions. But it was
So the thirty is for both groups?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And remember, thirty is all the signed kids, there's never gonna be more than twenty-five.
No day.
Right now.
Right now.
No day isn't one.
And we have two teachers
Yeah.
and two parents.
What's, is there a map to a number that you'll go up to?
Ten, ten per adult. Yeah.
Hmm.
So, so with the staff we have, we could have forty kids
Forty, yeah.
per day.
Okay.
And we're never gonna reset.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even the year before COVID, when we had forty-two signed up, on a given day, there was never, yeah. We had a lot of, we had a lot of kids that year, we're only, uh, two or three, if I remember.
Right. I thought we were looking at twenty-two per class, the hard term. So forty-four total.
Yeah.
But still, we're not gonna hit it, usually it's, usually it's twenty and thirteen.
Okay?
Thank you. I'm excited about it.
So we'll, uh, we'll keep you informed, uh, we have some parents who are on the, we don't know what they're doing list.
Yeah.
Uh, but that has dwindled. It was pretty big a couple of weeks ago, and now we're down to, I think, maybe four or five.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, if I may add, in the past, we just waited for folks to register, and now I think we have, you know, we've, all the, all the preschoolers who are gonna get, go to kindergarten have said they're gonna come to school here. All the, you know, so we have our kindergarten numbers are much more solid than they would have been in years past at this time of year.
Yeah.
Because we just kind of let the
People register.
People register whenever, we didn't really say is the deadline. We couldn't say no, and everybody knows you can't say no to the public school kindergarteners. But we want to know our number so we can properly staff it and make it a great program. And people responded, um, through our requests.
Great.
Yeah.
And throughout next school year, we'll keep an eye on, uh, mom's students that would be eligible for kindergarten following year.
Sure, of course, yeah, I, yeah, you know.
At that time, we know, that's not my fate.
Yeah, I don't have it at the top of my head because I didn't look at the numbers that way.
I was, I was, yeah.
I was looking at more of the size, class size. But, um, we, we have, how many will be of kindergarten age already?
Right.
I just, I just don't have it from me, to tell you.
No, but I do feel like if they're coming to preschool, it's likely they're going to hold here for kindergarten because you never know based upon the census, how many will actually come to Johnson, but that's a pretty good.
Yeah.
Right, now everyone who's under census, they get an invitation.
Yeah, right, yes.
They got the package, two, and, and two contacts, right?
Yeah, we go, we do a second mailing.
Oh, good, great.
Yeah, a second hard mailing to say this is our deadline.
Okay.
So the number's in.
So we can move on to new business, the lunch venue we needed.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, members of the community had had talked to me about one or two of the menu items. Uh, that they weren't sure that they were pleased with. So what we did is we did a uh, a survey. And, um, the first sheet of paper, you have the law. Just so you see how we made the graphs. And then the next three, uh, two are what the graphs represent. So we have thirty-two responses, we have a hundred and five families and about a hundred and fifty students that were, that includes preschool, that were involved in the possibility of pre-lunch. Um, so we asked, would you like to continue the cereal, turkey sausages and sweet potato fries? Um, fifty-six to forty-three percent, yes. That was one that a couple of the parents had questioned. So we, we asked about the, the soft pretzel with hummus and carrots. Uh, once again, that was even stronger, it was sixty, almost sixty-one to thirty-nine, yes. And then we, um, a couple of parents said, you know, my kids love pizza, can we have pizza more often? So we asked the question. And interestingly, this one was surprising.
I am shocked by this and I wanna question the data. No, I'm not shocked by it.
That's why I gave this one two.
Two, I mean, I mean fifty-four to forty-five is something that's high.
Um, I was surprised, so fifty-four to, uh, forty-six percent was no, so we'll leave it at one. Um, and I think we're gonna do this more often because I think, I think it was a, a, a better thing to do.
Yeah.
Uh, the more lightning things are something.
Of it.
I, I fully enjoy reading.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, all right, you're laughing.
I'm also, it's because, so, so to answer Michelle, sorry, is it okay if I just say one thing?
Yeah.
So like Michelle's reaction was interesting, right? Like, I can't believe it, but it seems like people, so I see two comments about the pizza. It seems like the, a kid who loves pizza doesn't necessarily like the pizza here. So I don't know if it's one of the comments that it was greasy, but I was a little surprised by that too because pizzas just seem so easy.
Yeah.
Um.
And I, I, I really have to make a comment. I I hate the pizza here.
Yeah.
It's not greasy.
Yeah.
Oh, it's good.
No.
And the, you know, I don't know if you do it at home, but when the pizzas go on, I look at the box.
Yeah.
And if it's orange, I don't buy the pizza anymore.
Right. The pizza's the.
Cause it, yeah, cause it means it's not real cheese.
Wait, it's from the school.
Yeah.
But a lot of people really, if you look at this, like a lot of people commented how good the they love the chicken fingers.
Yeah.
Yeah, like chicken fingers and the brothers and things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pasta, I see pasta.
But I do think, like if whatever the. Whatever, you know, Rockton decides to do and the nutritional consult. It would be helpful to share some, like just a really brief summary, thank you for your feedback. You know, and and that it's being taken into consideration.
Yeah, yeah.
Or with the awards.
I I.
We.
It's really nice when you give feedback on a survey and then you, you know, hear that it's being implemented.
Absolutely, yeah, I was very curious what was going on with it. I definitely thought that I would make comments.
Yeah.
Um based on what my kids have told me.
But I think that it's it's not like the the message about the condiments. It's like very appropriate, that people don't, like kids, particularly, some kids don't do sauces or condiments at all, and like that might.
Yes.
Help them eat things that.
Yeah.
Keep it on the side, absolutely.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is one of those per, this is one of those perfect surveys that there's no bad comment or bad response, because.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yes. Uh our nutritional consultant and our food service director will look at every comment and say, can we do this?
Yeah.
Yes.
The other thing from inside of.
Yeah. No.
The other thing from an allergy standpoint too, is that when we eliminate. Sausage and sauces and put like just kind of general ingredients together, like for example, like. Chicken kebab, like you can't have, as a person, the word to Terry, you can't have chicken kebab, and so like. Other than always eating chicken fingers and bread, or it's like, you know, it's either or have like a hot pasta, just you can have hot pasta, you can have a side of banana or, you know. Side of oil or even so many options to be, if.
Yeah.
When you do some more separation.
Yeah, and I think um my understanding, so I uh my hope is to me with is Shannon. Um and talk more about options, and definitely I was looking forward to hearing about this, but also um. Hearing about the, so from what I'm understanding is some of it is also like product issues. You know, like we we think we're getting one thing and that isn't available, or. And and so I I did hear that there were some issues where, like it's a comment here. There were some issues where the menu posted wasn't what was served, and I I did mention that as a concern.
Yeah.
My kids have also said, hey, who said it's this, it wasn't here. So well, you know, I plan to have a discussion about that and work through the kinks and.
And it probably is understandable, serving, you know, like.
Yeah.
Supply chain issues and everything.
Yeah.
But maybe, do we know that the day before, you can just send out a big message?
And I'm not sure, it's like the actual, like food delivery, because I I think it's the actual.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you think parents will send it back? It's kind of switched, that's something your kids have been eating.
Right, um right, and so I'll I'll figure that out, I'll talk to her about it, but but to Michelle's point, that's good, that is a good point. If you did pasta and you wanted, you could do whatever, you could sauce or nothing. Right, but if you see it on the menu as just pasta with butter, a kid may say, oh, I was hoping it was pasta sauce or whatever.
I, but I do think that they do that because. A lot of my children are wanting pasta sauce, and he's like, oh, I saw it, just pasta, so I did it. But what's in the mix?
I I think, I I don't, I think it is. But but, but my point is you could do like a pasta bar, right, you could do like a pasta bar where the sauces are on the side, is what I'm thinking.
But I would order.
Yeah, that's great idea.
You know?
Yeah, the uh the last time we had pasta with butter. Your kids went wild.
Oh my gosh, delicious.
But that's.
It's so good.
That's, that's. It'd be candy.
Right, so it would be exclusionary.
Yeah, you know, and if you had it on the side, then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yum.
Right, and you know, just. Feedback to for, you know, people who have to have dietary restrictions. It's not really conducive to have to eat them. Like I like the forms, the forms are easy to use, and it could be a similar option for people who have dietary restriction, because. The top, it's like you have to remember to do a form, and you have to remember like, you know, what the other student who's got the restriction, and then. You know.
So when you're saying that, you mean like, you know, the rest of the.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Not just.
Right, like I wanna do a burger and a meat skipper. Exactly, yeah.
And so to dig into that a little bit more, would it help if like the form had like an allergen section where you free type or?
Yeah, you can free type to say, you know, or like. Even at the top, like student name, are there allergies, list them off, and then.
Yes.
Under the menu options to say.
Absolutely. You know, or. I did notice that some of the items on the forms included added selections, for instance. Salad with chicken. Um.
Orange salad.
French toast sticks with turmeric.
On how the chicken is big.
Yes, and I think in certain situations, depending on the allergy, you you need to know that the product is that allergen free.
Right.
But whereas we know all of them are not free. So I think, I, but I hear you, I hear you, I think it would be helpful for that family to not have to make it, it shouldn't be actually worked over.
I think we had that, right?
No, but.
I mean, I don't mean the the nuts.
Yeah, in general, yeah.
You've taken care, there there isn't.
Yeah.
But I don't think we had that many families with. Allergen issues that we could have. A unique communication with them that's easier.
I think that's a process, I'm saying it's a second step.
Easier.
No, I need for the whole family. If you have three kids, one has allergy, the family does one.
One, right, right, where you see the form, and then you can fill in, hey, this is.
One thing. But we don't have that many, you can be, you could just create one ourselves.
Yeah, and then even just like, you know, not to have to. Ask every time, like does the chicken have, no, or did this have that?
Yeah.
Like I just don't even bother, because it's like, alright, chicken fingers and burger, that's it.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't have to do that, I think in in certain situations, I think.
Right.
I have actually like gone down to the to the restaurant that is so willing to help us.
Yeah.
And like, and they're amazing there, and they're, you know, looking at the labels to say, hey, if this product is replaced, what do you have, like. You know, but but I think that that's not always doable, and these bigger schools would, what will happen to make sure that you. Don't have to do that, well, how would it be different?
Right.
Is the way I see it, so that it's not more work for you.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And are, yeah, and.
Like in another situation, do we know that this is a dairy free, do we know this is an egg free, like.
Even even like the pizza option, like, you know, there's there is dairy free pizza, but like, I could never order a pizza because I couldn't go whole pizza at once, and like, well. You can just offer like this dairy free option for any student who wants it, like because it's good, you know, like. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
It's like, I I can't have pizza. Because I'm allergic.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Yeah.
That does make a difference.
Well, and in that situ, again, in that situation, I have had, luckily, we live where we live, and the people that are helping us are very amenable, and. I will say very open.
Yeah.
Cause I have had a conversation, hey, can we get this diet dairy free cheese?
Yeah.
And I think if. We can work it out, it's it's doable.
Yeah.
But I think, again, it just needs to happen, or somebody gets it.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Um very good feedback.
Yeah.
I I think for a any family who is concerned about allergies, we should definitely consider an easier way of communication.
Yes. Yes.
And I will think about that more.
And then.
And I'm I'm like, if you wanna talk.
Yeah, we can talk, yeah, yeah.
We also have to be very, very careful. That. We. Formally make sure. That the alternative food is made. In as separated away as needed.
Yeah.
Hmm, that there's no confusion.
Cause it's not just the food contamination.
Inteminations.
Oh, right.
Yes.
It's cross contamination.
Yeah, so if the dairy free pizza was made. Truly dairy free, it stays away from the dairy containing pizza.
Exactly, and and maybe that the stone that the pizza's made in on, that one goes in first.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, right, yes, yes. And this particular facility is served safe certified, I mean.
Yeah.
They're great, I mean, I will do it sometimes, and I'm like, hey.
Oh, they're good.
You do this, and they're always like so helpful.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah. Yeah, but then, but then I'm going in on my, on my own, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah. Um and I'm only laughing, because it's like, Aliyah, what do you want now?
Yeah.
But, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much, this was so helpful. Um and I am excited to touch.
And anything I can do, this is important, and I'd like to close with the reminder to all the parents and guardians that. September, there will be no universal. Pre lunch.
Oh, the new trial? Okay, as of right now.
As of right now, so.
Makes sense, that's unfortunate.
Um. Parents, I think parents and guardians need to plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if if we get a pleasant surprise, wonderful.
Okay, right.
And that's a three seventy-five.
Yes.
Three seventy-five. And last, the school bus information schedule.
Yeah, I I just wanted the members of the school committee to know, because you had mentioned this several meetings ago. Um the principal shared the school bus schedule with the sixth graders and Will with the fifth graders. And also the policies. Um. Which I, you had asked me to share.
Yeah.
Um I got feedback from some of the sixth grade parents that perhaps the uh schedule and policy. Weren't getting home, because the principal had shared with students.
Oh, yeah, I didn't.
It just reaffirm affirmed my belief that uh students don't make good couriers.
Yes.
So we will be sending that directly. To all the parents by email, have we done that yet?
Right.
We've not, but we're very close.
Okay, thank you, there's so many parents were like, huh, what what bus schedule?
Yeah.
And if I may follow up with that, um Madam Chair. Um one comment I made following this was that. Because we're not frequently even using backpacks on for other things like hockey and tennis and everything else. We're just gonna have, we're just gonna abandon that as a as a as a failsafe, and know that everything's gonna have to go on digital. Maybe you'll also get it as paper as a bonus.
Right.
But it can't, but paper's not gonna work, which is fine.
Right.
Yes.
The kids shouldn't be couriers. Um in the past, we've had to, we've gone that way, because we didn't have email and all these things, but. Um now that we've all gone digital and Google Form to sign up, it might as well.
Digital's a great environment to play with.
True.
Yes.
True, true.
Is there any? Appetite in my mind for staff to go digital for report cards?
Well, it's um Madam Chair through you, it's already done, it's um we have a portal, I can read um. Five.
I can look at my portals and see my.
Five or six years ago, I we had a workshop about it, and I haven't um done another one about what your your password is and so forth.
Yeah.
It's all in, it's all in our digital database.
Really?
So I can sign up right now and see.
Yeah. Yeah, through parent portal.
But does anybody know?
I don't know.
No, that's a wonder, and I know it's like a peanuts thing, but um. You know, I have, like having a report card come out for each term. You know, that's paper, it just seems kinda silly. But I'll be on, and going to the middle symbol, and all of their grades are online, and. I can access them, I don't have to, like if I'm bringing it.
It would, Madam Chair through you, it would make it a lot easier on the office staff if we didn't have to, if we didn't send home hard copies. Um.
There are no hard copies in the school.
Oh, I, there are no hard copies in the world anymore, so.
Yeah.
I think it's Andy, we need to have.
Start using the portal.
To, yeah, are there any current guardians that? Oh, good point, Andy.
No.
Okay, I was gonna say.
No.
Um portal just reminds me. I don't know if this is something we've ever done, but I heard feedback from a friend in a different school that that's very, totally that. Her daughter's classroom teacher has a private group for them to share. Photos of the year, events that have been happening, so like. If Miss Dan comes into the classroom and teaches them, and people have taken photos. They can be shared amongst that private group. I'm wondering if that's something we could consider, maybe the teachers would consider having like the classroom parents spearheaded or. A Google classroom.
I don't know, it's.
So it's like a universal place for the families and the teacher to share things, and then. I'm just thinking of all the fun things we've done the last couple of weeks, and I have so many.
Yeah.
Pictures to share, but I don't wanna email them all, the families, or.
Right.
Having this COVID be in charge of it, and, yeah, so I I was wondering about that, Mr. Andrews.
We do have Google, and that is our email, you know, in the group photo, so it is possible we can have a shared folder.
Yeah, and I don't even know if some of the younger grades already do it, but I was, it was just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me look into it, I'll, we have your back.
Okay, thanks, and sorry.
Next week.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at portal right now for my name, but I would be wanting to, those are my students, either academics. Or is my student.
I wouldn't expect so, you you would, I would expect.
I'm happy to, with this, somebody in the office, and then we could teach.
Well, yeah.
Families how to use it.
Certainly, certainly, I'd be happy to help with that.
That's awesome.
I think parents.
Oh, no, I think no one will.
Yeah, I know, we learned so much today.
I I.
Yeah.
Fantastic, my my uh. My thinking was that because we only do great report cards once a trimester, and it's. And we're not put putting all our grades, we're not putting any grades besides end term grades. It would just be something else you'd have to log into, and I thought that you'd rather just have a paper. Nice, you know, a paper copy of it rather than, but I, but.
Maybe the transition area too.
Yeah.
But like, so what you're saying is when the parent, when the teachers report their grades currently that go into the printed. It goes into this report.
That's right.
So it wouldn't be an extra step.
It would not be an extra step.
It would actually.
No, it'd be, it'd be better.
So wait, so it's, I don't know, the report card.
Is it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, there's. This. Was.
I did get feedback from one parent that said, geez, I think it's so great that you still do hard copies, but um. And my feeling also was that, because. There's so many, so much work that goes into this report, that it should be, maybe it should be. Hard, that was my thinking, is that maybe it should be a hard copy, but I think to do both and to prey on both. Is problematic.
I mean, I don't can be wrong.
And I so be happy to go digital.
But I'm fully open minded, I'm team digital.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, you're not gonna get a fight here. We'll talk it over and get back to you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other committee business that we wanna discuss?
No, thank you. I was just gonna ask if there was any. The any um.
No, I know, it's the. Bus monitor.
Yes, I know. I thought that was actually what this agenda item was gonna include, but. I know that there there's, I didn't know, any thoughts came out of the woodwork on what we should do. Cause I think the idea of parent volunteer is just unreal.
Yeah.
Uh the one thing that, you know, I. I thought about and um. I know that there is like, you know, maybe there's um. Volunteer, police officer, the volunteer. Or like, there's a cadet program. Please, like, and and that's maybe a stretch, but. You know, just like take the volunteer hours more community involved. I love it, police agencies and the kids, like just, you know, positive way. But that's the only, that's the only thing that I can think, that I can think of that. Something to be like voluntold to do, like, hey, you, training.
Looking for your.
They are. And they're.
I hope we can leave the Geneva Convention for a little bit, it's that as cruel and unusual.
I don't know.
Madam Chair, um. I will continue to look into it, I have no one yet expressed any interest, it is posted, and if not, we will post it again.
Okay, so.
It may expire.
So the position has.
Yeah, uh our, just as a reminder, our school bus provider has no monitors. In any school they provide transportation for.
Right. Right.
Including kindergarten students who are transported. And we had one complaint. Um. I believe the complaint we got this year may have been the first one that I've gotten. In definitely in years. Um. Maybe my entire time here. And it was a um. A type of behavior that a monitor would not have been able to see here or do anything about.
People saying things.
And I have checked again with the bus company, and the bus drivers are reporting that there's no problems on the bus whatsoever. That the kids are in their seats, quiet. And. and are are not disrupted in any way and are certainly not unsafe in any way.
And there is video on it, excuse me.
Yeah.
There is video recordings on buses as well.
We have cameras on all of us.
When we went to the open house, I overheard the principal say that I think, I remember somebody did ask that question earlier, say again, that you know, we were getting more reports about their being.
Yeah.
He can talk to me. Oh. It's it's pretty adamant that there are issues with school buses. I don't know if they.
Can you see it?
Well, there are, if there are, there are issues that none of the school bus drivers know about. And when you, so I don't know what that means.
Yeah, to your.
I will check, I will check again.
I get the feeling that it's what they maybe do on their phones that cause issues when they get to the school.
That maybe.
Well, yeah, he's definitely.
That's what I think.
We'll find out more.
That's a clever analysis.
Yeah, full of knowledge.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably exactly what or I hope.
You know, whether it caused drama on the bus with people or unrelated or. I guess my only question, because I don't understand the um school bus schedule again, forgive my ignorance, is that the pickup and drop off, is it all grades? So is, does it combine middle and high school students?
I don't believe so.
Uh yeah, one bus does, right.
One does, two do.
One bus, two do.
Okay.
One bus does, two buses do.
And when you get them scheduled, obviously. So on vice versa, like school. Okay. And then also on the right home. On the right home, I think they're separate. From the high school and the middle school, because that seems to be where the problem. Yes, I understand. So a bus from the high school have the high school students and drops them up and down, and it's separate bus from the school head. And then there's a late bus.
And then there's a late bus that has slow.
A late bus. Oh, okay. For kids that stay for after-school activities, sad. What?
A late bus.
There's a late. Yes, but but there's not a late bus that is late enough for the extracurricular activities. I think that's the issue. That's the issue, is that the timing, yeah, because that's what you asked and the principal told us that you have to meet.
Because I think is the late bus.
It wasn't the late one.
Extra help maybe?
But I wonder, is that something we could look at? Like, what's the point of having a late bus if they can't take kids that are staying for extracurricular activities? So maybe since schedules? We do?
The the bus schedule or the school schedule?
The boat, the bus.
The bus schedule with the late.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Already wrote it down.
Okay. Yeah, like, can you do this? Can you do, can you do this?
Maybe because I'm just, I didn't realize that the after-sweat tip is you wouldn't get to see the bus.
Yeah, I I found. Yes, I think it's always been like, you know, what are, what do they get up, two twenty, two fifteen, and then three o'clock is the late bus? Like, it's like staggered, but not late, like four thirty-five.
No, but I don't think after-sweat bus lasts that long.
Yeah, they may be.
Let's say it's Jason, when the late bus should be at the middle school and and the high school principal
Yeah.
to to be most effective and then I'll deal with uh the bus company.
Right.
Yeah.
But I wanna, I wanna have something to say to them.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And Madam Chair, if I may add, uh the middle and high school students are on um bus two and together and on bus three together.
Yes, and and by.
In the mornings.
That's in the morning?
In the morning.
Okay.
And bus one is just to the high school.
Yes, bus one will begin its route at Joplin School then proceed to the Tides Restaurant. I don't know why it says that.
And then goes.
I, yeah.
It's.
Not on Monday or Tuesday.
So.
I think the early bus goes to the high school and then the later bus.
Okay, if you find out when the optimum time for pickups would be I think this is related to the the schedules shift this year. And if you remember, the question was, was it gonna have to rearrange the bus schedule? And the bus company said, no, we will just go the bus that we were going to the high school would just go to the middle school because they flipped the times. And I'm not sure they did it in the afternoon. That may be the problem. If there is one, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Yeah, but but let's find out what the optimum times for middle school late pickup and high school late pickup would be. And then I'll talk to the bus company. And we may be able to do something about it. It may be a conflict with other runs they have, so I don't know. We're a very small contract compared to others that they have.
Thanks. I have no business. No, no more business.
No, no more business.
I think, I think we have enough to.
The announcements.
No.
No. Make motion to adjourn. Executive session, conduct a strategy session. Departmentation for negotiating with the funding personnel for the collective bargaining sessions or contact negotiations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Hi. Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-seven. Great, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks, girl.
Sure thing. See, I'm just gonna X this out here.